Good morning. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President. We are late starting this morning, I apologize. We have some computer issues with my computer. So, anyway, thank you all for joining us today. We have a great, great group of people to observe our council meeting. And, you know, before we do our council meetings at times, we have the opportunity to recognize special events, special people that have impacted our city. And we have a couple of people that we want to honor this morning before we start our council meeting. So I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Kevin Reich, who is the Chair of the Transportation Public Works Committee. And so our first person that we want to recognize is our city engineer, the head of the Public Works Department, Steve Kotke. So Steve, oh, there he is in the front there. Why don't you come and join us? And we had a lovely celebration yesterday. He's retiring. And just had a huge number of people join us to wish him well and thank him for all his service to the city. So I'll turn this over to Kevin.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I've had the distinct pleasure of serving on the Transportation Public Works Committee, first as Vice Chair when I first was elected, and now currently as its Chair. And with that came an opportunity to work with some great people, but most specifically the Director, Steve Kotke. It was my distinct pleasure to serve with you and serve along your side. So it's been a distinct pleasure. And with that, so many things were said actually at the ceremony, I'm not going to go into it. I mean, the successes that amounted to where you took the department and thereby where you took the city are quite impressive. And I think we'll capture some of it in this resolution that I wish to read for you. So this is honoring Steve Kotke for his service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. And Steve Kotke, whereas Steve Kotke, Director of Public Works and City Engineer, first entered employment in the Public Works Department in 1989 and worked as a paving engineer, Director of General Services, AKA Property Services, and Deputy Director, Internal Services, before his appointment by Mayor R.T. Rybek to lead the department in 2006. And whereas Mr. Kotke carried out the significant duties and responsibilities of Public Works Director with the public's best interest always in his highest priority, balancing complex and competing interests with adept technical and political skill to find the best path forward for Minneapolis. Whereas Mr. Kotke had the courage and fortitude to tackle challenges big and small, always striving to continuously improve, sorting out issues related to finances, regulations, infrastructure, development projects, organizational structure, staffing, and a wide array of other issues, all of which will continue to have a significant positive impact on the city of Minneapolis for many years to come. Whereas Mr. Kotke expertly led the department through several catastrophic events, including the 35W Bridge collapse, multiple windstorms, two tornadoes, and a gas main explosion. Whereas Mr. Kotke led the department through the 35W Bridge rebuilding, reopening of the Plymouth Bridge, the Sabo Bridge, the Southwood LRT negotiations, and municipal consent, the Blue and Green Line LRTs, the Mark II Project, crosstown commons, 35W transit access, One Sort Recycling, organics rollout, facility plans, complete streets policy, protected bike lanes, bike trails, including the Cedar Lake Trail and Dinkytown Greenway. And some of them he just got done in the last month. That was pretty impressive. It was pretty impressive. Whereas Mr. Kotke served as leader for the city on transportation and funding, changes to project delivery methodology, managing LGA cuts, regional funding, downtown action plan, Access Minneapolis, Green Fleet policy, building the High Watha LED certified facility, as well as significant bridge projects, including North Town Camden Plymouth, 10th Bridge and Bridge Nine, which now has a bicycle facility. Whereas Mr. Kotke expertly managed the city's largest department with 1,000 employees and a 335 million operating budget and 110 million capital budget. Whereas Mr. Kotke is bilingual and is renowned for his ability to translate engineerese into English. So elected officials, staff, and the community stakeholders fully understand public works projects. Can't underestimate that talent in particular. Whereas Mr. Kotke is widely respected by a broad array of partners, stakeholders, and sought out for advice on issues well beyond the duties typically under the purview of a public works director. And whereas Mr. Kotke will be deeply missed by the city's elected officials, department heads, staff, and fellow members of the Public Works Department as a leader, professional engineer, colleague, and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, the city council commends Steve Kotke for his dedication and exemplary service to the city of Minneapolis and expresses a deep gratitude and appreciation to him for his outstanding commitment to the city. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council congratulate Steve Kotke for his many significant accomplishments and wish him much happiness and fulfillment in all of his new adventures. Steve, I really, really do not want to say goodbye, but given all your accomplishments, I'm very eager to say thank you.
Thank you. I would love to. So I didn't expect cameras here to be at my resolution. First, I just really want to thank the city council. I really, it's been just an honor and a privilege to serve you over the last 10 years in the city. What's interesting is I work very closely with the city council, and I don't think the public really understands how difficult a job they have it is. And it's a very difficult job, and you do it so well. So thank you so very much. Also, you know, I'd really like to accept this resolution on behalf of Public Works. We've done a lot of really great things over the last 10 years, but this is a team effort. You know, I was, I had the honor of leading the department, but this was really our department that really accomplished all these things. So we have an incredibly great group of people, our division directors and all the employees in Public Works, who are just a very, very talented group of people. And it's been an honor for me to be able to work with all of them. So thank you very much.
The next person that we would like to honor is Gary Warrenburg, who is retiring after 27 years of service to the city of Minneapolis, and he is our purchasing director. Behind the scenes, behind the scenes, this is a huge operation, as people know, about a $1.3 billion budget that our city has every year. And so let's just say we buy a few things. So Mr. Warrenburg has been responsible for that. Councilmember Elizabeth Glidden, my colleague, who is the Chair of the Committee of the Whole, will talk about Mr. Warrenburg and read the resolution.
I hope I can do this well because I forgot my reading glasses. Okay? All right. I just wanted to say a really thank you so much to Gary because this is really the unsung work of the city of Minneapolis that's part of making us work well. This is one of these enterprise functions where we have to reach out and work with all the departments in all the different ways that they want to do their work and then make sure that they are following our requirements and that we're getting the job done. And it is a very challenging job, and you have been here for a long time. I think it will be very difficult to figure out how do we replace that institutional memory and all the other things people have enjoyed about working with you over the years, and I certainly have enjoyed that as well. So with that, I'm going to read this resolution. And this is a resolution honoring Gary Warrenburg for 27 years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Gary Warrenburg has had a distinguished career with the city of Minneapolis for over 27 years, serving as only the fifth purchasing director in the history of the city. And whereas Gary's institutional knowledge and understanding of the importance of balancing the needs of today with an eye toward the future contributed to professionalizing procurement practices for the city. And whereas Gary has served as the delegate chair of the Permanent Review Committee since 1992, reviewing all requests for proposals for services estimated to exceed $50,000. And whereas Gary's leadership and commitment to the environment led Minneapolis to become one of the first cities in the United States to adopt a comprehensive environmental purchasing policy in 2008. And whereas Gary's city friends and colleagues will miss his hard work and leadership on behalf of the city, but will miss even more his respectful nature, his commitment to be a role model and mentor, his calm demeanor, and hearing him say, "It is what it is." Okay? And whereas Gary has always been a dedicated family man, he is making his wife work another year while no longer having a chauffeur. After 27 years with the city, he is considering a significantly long honey-do list. He is seeking new and exciting volunteer gigs. He is learning to cook. He is doing his wife's bidding for their favorite family charity. And whereas Gary will no longer be concerned with the Uniform Municipal Contracting Act and will pay far more attention to the United States Golf Association. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the Minneapolis City Council does hereby present this honorary resolution in recognition and appreciation for the many contributions and improvements made by Gary Warrenburg during his 27 years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Barbara. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure. I just want to say, like Steve said, none of this would ever happen without the staff you have working currently and some of my old staff members here too. That's really what does the work here. And Steve and I came together and we're leaving together. So in 1989, we both started, and it just happened to work out that way. But truly has been a great place to work. Truly love working with everybody here and the projects you work on. And like you said, we touch everything, and it's, hopefully the next purchasing agent stays equally as long. So thanks again.
Thank you. All right.
order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
President.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
President.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have all members present this morning. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and there are a couple motions. First, a motion by Councilmember Palmasano to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of Motions, the creation of a sick and vacation leave benefits policies work group. Is there a second to that motion? When moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then we have a motion by Councilmember Bender to move to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of New Business, the following, a notice of intent to introduce an ordinance relating to the zoning definition of half stories, and a notice of intent to introduce an ordinance relating to yard and setback requirements in non-residential zoning districts. Is there a second? That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. The agenda has been amended. Is there a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in approval, or any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 13, 2016, and the adjourned session held May 17, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items today on the agenda. The first is the transgender equity resolution. The second is the workplace regulations ordinance. I don't know if you want to handle those separately. I had one comment to make on the transgender equity resolution before we move to the workplace regulations.
Why don't you go ahead and make your comment, and then we'll go to the workplace and then board on the committee report as, unless there are amendments to the sick. But I don't think there will be.
I don't think so.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead?
All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize this very significant action that the city of Minneapolis is taking by approving a transgender equity resolution. We have had a transgender issues work group in the city of Minneapolis for several years now. This group was initiated by our former city policy aide Andrea Jenkins. And so I just want to acknowledge that she is the genesis of this important work of the city. What happens with this resolution is that we are taking the work of this committee, and we are institutionalizing it in the city of Minneapolis. We are moving to adopt a formal advisory committee. We are taking more actions to do enterprise-wide work around transgender issues. And I was so happy that we were able to hear from Andrea Jenkins, who today is the oral historian for the Treader Collection at the University of Minnesota, from Roxanne Anderson, who is one of our 2016 Pride Grand Marshals, and Philippe Cunningham, who is a policy aide in the mayor's office, all three of which are members of this committee and connected to Community, which is pushing this work and supporting this work. Efforts are going on across our nation to undermine transgender rights. And these are efforts really to undermine all of our rights. So I think this resolution is especially important because it's an effort to show we are standing together. So thank you. And are we going to move on to the other item before we vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Our second item is the Workplace Regulations Ordinance. This is a passage of an ordinance amending Title II of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to administration, adding a new Chapter 40 entitled Workplace Regulations relating to paid time off and earned sick time, and I will move that item as well. I'm sure there will be some comments.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on either of those items? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Leading up to the Committee of the Whole meeting yesterday, I didn't get a chance to sleep for the prior two nights. We were busy drafting the ordinance, ensuring that both the enforcement and the appellate levels went smoothly, and just crafting the nitty-gritty that most of the time is not all that sexy. But it needed to get done, and I fully anticipated after what I anticipated being a successful vote at the Committee of the Whole meeting just crashing yesterday. But I, like many of my colleagues that I talked to, were absolutely revved, wired, heart was racing, didn't sleep that night, probably wouldn't sleep tonight either because we're, I think in so many ways, elated by the policy that we are about to pass that will help so many people. When I was young, I fell in love with the sport of running, not because of the athletic endeavor, but because there's a direct correlation between hard work and success. And that direct correlation sadly you don't find in other experiences in life, whether they be athletic or social. You know, depending on who your parents are, what side of the tracks you grew up on, that in many ways predicts your future. And so I, like I think many of my colleagues, initially got into politics because we wanted to create a foundation from which people could spring, to create that direct correlation between hard work and success. And a foundation like that simply does not exist if being sick for a couple days results in your inability to pay your rent or your mortgage, followed by a foreclosure, losing your job, and then falling into an endless spiral of homelessness and poverty. There is no foundation in that. So this ordinance, simply put, will help people, period. It'll help people with a foundation that will give rise to themselves. It'll help, they will be able to lift themselves out of poverty into a different class. And, you know, I thought also a lot about good policy, and good policy especially at the city level is not created by hashtags, Facebook posts, and rhetoric. Good policy is not created by labeling people business pawns or wacko lefty. Labels, as we've experienced our first soup cans. For good policy, you've got to consider the practical realities of being a new business. And in this ordinance, we've done that. You've got to consider the practical realities of being a working person in this city. And I'm proud to say that we've done that. You've got to make sure the policy can be implemented and enforceable with both the employer and the employee with equal rights. The fastest way to erode the public trust in government is by creating policies and laws that cannot be enforced. And I'm proud to say with this ordinance, there won't be no erosion. But most of all, passing great policy requires people to work together, approaching issues with a different, with a mind for different perspectives, different backgrounds, and experiences. Everybody up here on this dais has their own experience. Everybody in the audience has got their own background and experiences. And the unique thing about crafting policies, not only do you have to unpack your own luggage, you probably have to unpack other people's as well. You've got to look at it. You've got to consider where they come from. And at times even have to compromise. And that compromise doesn't happen by ripping people apart in public. It happens by working together. And the reason that this ordinance has been so successful is we've worked together. We set up a partnership. We heard different people's perspectives and backgrounds. We compromised. We figured something out, and now we've got a policy that's put together that's going to help tens of thousands of people. You know, and I want to thank, I want to thank the workers. I want to thank the activists. I want to thank the business community, both small and large businesses, the business associations. I want to thank city staff. A special thanks to Susan Trammell, who's been staying up night after night for the last like couple weeks at least. And a huge thank you to all of my colleagues that did consider other perspectives. That most definitely is the reason that this ordinance is passing, and that's the reason that people in Minneapolis of all backgrounds will benefit.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm really excited this morning to be at this moment and see all of you in this room, who I've been working with so closely over the past year. This has been such an intensive process. I've been in rooms, again, for over a year now, and this discussion has had its ups and downs. There were nights where we were speaking on the phone every night at 8:30 PM after a lot of our kids went to bed to try to keep this on track. There were moments where we had heard a lot of emotion from workers, from business owners. And I'm really proud that we all were able to find a way to move forward in those moments because this is such a significant moment for our city. This is the first, I think, of many regulations that our city and other cities across the country are passing to address the new economic realities and political realities in our country. You know, hundreds of years ago, as our economy, that economy, the sort of old industrial economy emerged, we needed to rely on our government to pass basic protections for workers. And workers demanded those. We have, many of us have weekends off and 40-hour work weeks because workers rose up, including my grandfather, actually, who was an organizer with his auto union, and demanded protections. And that's what's happening here today. We're hearing from workers who have to go to work sick. And because so many of our workers in Minneapolis and across the country rely on multiple low-wage jobs, it is the difference between making ends meet, putting food on the table, paying rent. Sometimes it's the difference between having a home and homelessness. Sometimes it's the difference between being able to send your child to school with a winter coat, as we heard during the testimony, or relying on the school to find one in the left-behind bin. And these are just some of the stories that we heard from working people in our city throughout this process. This is a small, I think, drop in the bucket, but it is a huge change in the way that we're approaching how we're standing up for our workers in our city. And I'm really proud of us for taking this step. You know, I heard a lot of stories over the past year, and it's what kind of kept me going in those difficult moments when we weren't sure we were going to be able to bring ourselves to consensus. And I think in part it was because I have one of my own that was so powerful to me. Because six years ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer while I was pregnant. And I know what it's like to not have enough sick days. And I was in a job where I had the most support you could possibly imagine. I had every benefit and support someone could need to get through that the best they could. So I can't imagine what it would be like to have something like that happen and have to go to work cleaning a building, or not have my family nearby to take care of my children when I needed, or not have an employer that said, you know, "It's good today. You can head home." Because I went to work after surgery, a couple days after surgery, I went to work week after week after chemotherapy treatments. And those are the stories that we heard from our workers. And we have so many people going to work in so many situations that this policy, again, just starts to meet the needs of the people in our city. I think the other thing that's happening, you know, cities are under so much pressure, I said this yesterday, because our federal government isn't offering workers the protections they need. And so advocates are coming to cities, and we are stepping up and leading. And the city of Minneapolis is one of those cities. We are the first city in the state of Minnesota to pass paid sick and safe time. And that's why it was more difficult because we had all of those big conversations about, should we be doing this? Is this overreach? How do we balance the needs of businesses with the needs of our workers? And I think, as Councilmember Frye said, I think we hit a really great set of compromises. We engaged with our business community, large and small. We engaged with our business associations across the city. We heard from our own small businesses, and we crafted an ordinance that responded to the concerns that we were hearing from our business community, and we have a path forward to make it easier to run a city, a business in the city of Minneapolis. But we also passed a strong policy that acknowledges that people get sick and they need protections. And I think we landed at a really great place with our paid sick ordinance. I'm so thrilled that we are likely to have a unanimous vote today. I think it shows the work of so many people who brought us to this place. I just don't usually do this, but I wanted to just make sure to name some of them. David Frank from CPED, Nurya Rivera Vandermeide from our city coordinator's office, Peter Ginder, who's now retired, I hope this didn't force him into retirement, and Susan Trammell from the city attorney's office, Casey Carl in the city clerk's office, who really stepped up with all of the engagement that was done, all of the folks that served on our workplace partnership group, and the folks from the downtown council, all of our business associations, the Main Street Alliance, Metro IBA, NOCS, ATU, all of the folks from Labor, Take Action, and all of the individual people, particularly the workers and the business owners who came forward to share their very personal stories. You are what got us to this moment, and I'm very thankful for all of your leadership.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, I just wanted to start with the bottom line, which is that it was a large community effort that got us here, and you did it. And thank you for pushing us to do the right thing. This is something where I, one of the things that was most touching to me was that so many people really dug deep to talk in a venue that was uncomfortable about personal experiences to them that they felt it was important for us to hear. And those are both from the worker's side and from the business side. So I just, I really want to appreciate so many people who came forward to tell their stories. I want to say one of the ones that we heard at our public testimony recently that really struck a chord with me personally was a school nurse who talked about the circumstance that she would see every day when a child comes in, is sent to her office from the classroom because you cannot keep a sick child in the classroom, and essentially is there because the parent could not figure out what's the way I'm able to take that day off of work without jeopardizing my job, which then is jeopardizing my family. And I just contrasted that with my own experience, which actually was very recent, my privilege and ability as a salaried employee to be able to leave and go and care for
and ability as a salaried employee to be able to leave and go and care for my child, who, the same week as that public hearing, was sent to the school nurse's office because she was not able to stay in the classroom, but I was able to go and get her. And I'm a salaried employee who has these benefits. This is, this is a process where I feel that compromises were made with input from the business community and from worker advocates, in that the Workplace Partnership Group was an excellent venue for some of that respectful dialogue and debate. I'm glad that we're going to have a recommendation coming forward soon about how to institutionalize that type of venue for ongoing conversation. And I'm really glad also that our final ordinance reflects the main components of the recommendations from the Workplace Partnership Group. I feel like you put in hard work and compromise to get to that point, and I feel good that we are able to honor that work here with our ordinance. And it reflects some balanced additional feedback as well that we got from businesses and worker advocates in the final product that we're going to adopt today. These conversations, as Councilmember Bender said, are not isolated to Minneapolis. Conversations about how to provide minimum standards around workplace issues such as sick leave. We're not the first by a long shot to take this kind of action at the city level because these kinds of ordinances are being adopted by cities all across the nation in the face of gridlock from our state governments and the federal government. And that's just what is happening. That's the situation that we are faced with, that now we have residents who are telling us we need standards in the workplace to match up to the new realities of how our economy is developing. And I feel that that is what we have done, is responding to those concerns. And in Minnesota, although we're the first, we are not the only. So in St. Paul, the process is underway there to probably very soon consider a draft ordinance. Conversations are happening in the city of Duluth about sick leave. And I will tell you that I have heard from policymakers in other cities as well in the state of Minnesota about their interest in this topic and that they are following action closely. So this is something that is a statewide interest, but it's something where the cities are taking leadership and moving forward. I also wanted to say a thank you to our amazing city staff who have worked so very hard, and it really is a very large team. But a special thank you to Susan Trammell, Nurya Rivera Vandermeide, Casey Carl, and David Frank. And I also wanted to thank staff from my own office, Sarah Lopez, who helped me talk to probably dozens of businesses and worker groups in efforts to make sure we were trying to reach out and hear from as many people as possible. That's about it. I spoke too long. But to the organizations that have helped convene worker voices, Saitool, NOC, Take Action, I'm now like blanking on others, but there is a large coalition of groups. I just want to say thank you. That is hard work. You've done the hard work, and we thank you for that.
Councilmember Cano.
Thank you, Madam President. Muchisimas gracias a todos los que ayudaron con este esfuerzo. I want to thank everybody who helped with this effort. Definitely the city staff, definitely the council members, and definitely the policy aides who have been working so, so many hours on this front. I was really pleased to see so much turnout at our public hearing where we had 75-plus members come and testify around this issue, talking about it and sharing their experiences of this particular ordinance and the impact that it would have on their lives. You know, we heard from the community about how it was really terrible to put families in a situation where they have to make impossible choices. Do they take care of their health, or do they take care of their bills? And so with that, we also heard from the community about this issue from a human rights perspective, and the fact that taking care of our families is a basic human right. And today, we are making sure that is a protected, basic human right. It is not often that I feel proud of the work that we do on the council, because my expectations of the racial equity work that we need to be doing are very high. Today, I am proud to sit on this council, and I am proud to be able to pass and adopt this ordinance. I think it will have an immense impact on our community. However, because I do know what it's like to come from a community that has to get up and go clean that bathroom, and go clean that hotel room, and go wash those dishes, I know we can do more. And again, you know, this is coming from a community that works really, really hard. And so it's hard for me to dole out pats on the back, because when my immigrant community works really, really hard, what we get in return are raids and deportations. So when I do say congratulations to the community and to the council, I do mean it in a very significant way. I want to thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing the work of standing up, speaking up, and fighting for justice. This is why we are responding. This is why we are doing our job for you today. We work for you. We serve you. And with that, I want to acknowledge and remind everybody that this issue is connected to a broader injustice happening in our city, where even with our $9 an hour minimum wage, that's $18,000 for a family. That's below the federally recognized poverty level. So I am here to say congratulations on this win. Let's keep moving forward. And I challenge the community, and I challenge the council to pass a raise in the minimum wage to $15 an hour, if not this year, next year during our reelection. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. It's so humbling and so, such an honor to be up here and to be able to be a part of this. And it's been such a journey, working from the early days when this was an idea and talking about it with colleagues. And that was before kind of the cat was out of the bag, so to say, and being able to look at what others were doing and to take those ideas and start building support within the community, and then to go through challenging times and to be here today where we have a unanimous decision. And it's, it's just really, I want to echo what Councilmember Bender said, you know, having your own personal stories. I think every single one of you in this room has had health problems of some sort or another, and have had bad days where you're sick and you can't go to work. And I've been privileged to have the support, especially when going through times where I've had to have multiple surgeries and prolonged recoveries, or, you know, even just being out for a week with the flu. And it's, it's absolutely been a privilege to have that support. But a lot of people don't have it. Far too many people don't have it. And it is just such an honor to be a part of that, to be able to provide that and ensure that for hundreds of thousands of people in our city. And I think about this work like I think about our fire inspections. I think about fire inspections a lot because it's one of these jobs where if you do it right, you don't hear a lot about it. But it's only when a family of five perishes in a fire in a rental home where they didn't have a smoke detector, an inspection didn't happen, that you really realize the value of that. And that work that fire inspections does will never be able to quantify. We'll never be able to quantify how many families are okay because there was a smoke detector there. We'll never be able to know how many lives were saved. And that's just what we're doing here today. And I think in 20 or 30 years, you're probably, we'll each remember our role in this, and you'll all remember your role in this because you absolutely have a role in doing this work. But I don't think others are going to be thinking about the council members up here. I think they're going to be going on with their lives and happy that they can get that day off when they're sick. And we're not going to know how many lives were saved, how many jobs were kept, how many families were able to care for their children, how many mortgages didn't fall through because somebody didn't have the income, how many people were able to get to that doctor's appointment that they needed to. But so many thousands and thousands and tens of thousands of instances to come over the decades. And we make our city healthier and stronger, and we affect lives and we save lives as part of this. And I just want to thank all my constituents for their support on this. I want to thank all the community members, all the staff, all the people that played a vital role. My former senior policy aide Ilhan Omar, who was here from the very start with it, through the dark days of it, and has since moved on, but was a key, you know, always had my back with that during the tough times too. And the businesses in my community where we had those tough conversations, where even when we were ideologically opposed, they said, I get it. I get what you're doing. I understand the ideological difference, but you're doing something great here, and we're gonna, we're gonna be okay because of this. And the businesses that took the lead and went out on a limb and implemented it themselves and showed that this is good for their bottom line, that this is good for their workers and their, their workers are their family, and that they're taking care of them as well. So it's just been such an honor to be a part of it, and I just greatly appreciate everyone involved with it, and so thankful for this day. Thank you.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to echo some of the words of Councilmember Frye. And I have to say, I didn't sleep well at all last night as well, nor many nights for that matter for the past few months. Last night, at least four shootings happened in Ward 5. And so while we're at making historic laws, I hope that we'll focus next on stopping the gun violence in North Minneapolis. I'm writing, or I'm saying, you know, I'm voting in favor of this proposal today despite some deep concerns about the impact of this regulation and how it will impact the businesses in Ward 5. But first and foremost, I wanted to thank an unsung hero for this. And I know this person may not like it, but I'm just going to throw it out there anyway. My colleagues have thanked many deserving people already, and I just wanted to thank this person who might have saved sick time from not happening, and that is Council President Barb Johnson, actually. Thank you. Sometimes you don't get enough credit. There is undeniable proof of the public health benefits of this change. Sick employees lead to other sick people. The explicit need for food workers to stay away from their jobs when they are sick is one of the obvious arguments in favor of an ordinance such as this. But for many of the small businesses in North Minneapolis, this creates a pretty heavy burden. Increased payroll and compliance costs on top of already very high security costs could be a burden that some of the small businesses in Ward 5 will not be able to bear. Time will tell of the impact this has on North Side businesses like Olympic Cafe, Pappy's, Good Deal Oriental Market, McDonald's, Paradise Pizza, et cetera. Finally, I can only hope that other cities around the region and the state look at pursuing similar ordinances to cover all workers regardless of the location of their workplace. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I think this is a really big deal, and I'm really glad that we're at this point and that we're doing this. And I just wanted to briefly share my appreciation for everybody who got involved and worked on this. I also wanted to give a special thanks to the Workforce Regulations Partnership Group. I think they did a lot of this work, and they worked hard and helped to take a lot of the heat away from the council when it seemed like we needed somebody to take some of the heat away from the whole discussion. And also a special thanks to Luke Weisberg, who facilitated the group. I got to see Luke in action a few times, and he was wrestling with the, as great as the partnership individuals were in the group, that was quite a project, trying to bring them to consensus and agreement, and what decisions do we make next, and how do we do it, and it took a lot of creativity and perseverance. And I appreciate that a great deal. I also think that, in a way, it's too bad that we're having to spend so much time and work so hard on this. And I just want to highlight that this is evidence that there's something really, really wrong with the economic system in the country and in the world that we're working in. And it really became clear to me during some of the debates of all this, when somehow we were having the most struggling workers thinking it was them against some of our hardest-working, most treasured small businesses. And somehow we were way down here, having a battle with ourselves about a problem that is much bigger and is much different. I'm sure we've all seen the graphs and the charts about the wealth, how much does the 10% have of the wealth of our, of the world and of the country? How much is the 1%?